Appropriations and adjudication will come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on November 30th with a second notice provided on December 5th. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature’s website. This morning at 9:00, we have one item on the agenda, and that is Bill 199 introduced by myself and Dr. Senator Nerissa Underwood, an act to appropriate the sum of $2,500,000 from the unappropriated Healthy Futures Fund revenue in FY 2015 to the Guam Department of Education Fund for the operation of the Guam Department of Education. This bill was introduced soon after our office received the October 20th consolidated revenue and expenditure report, no, the special revenue report on the 20th. And in that special revenue report, there was a $12 million infusion of cash into the Healthy Futures Fund. And we thought we’d try to take advantage of that if, in fact, there is some cash there that we can utilize to assist the Department of Education. We understand that they were shorted in the Territorial Education Facilities Fund in the previous year, and anything that we could do to try to assist them get some cash from somewhere, Dr. Underwood and I both committed to doing that. And I’m sure the Legislature would, too. We could just confirm that there is cash there. So, this special revenue fund for the end of the fiscal year did show a $12 million infusion of cash. I understand that the special revenue report was issued for last week for the month of October, which shows that it’s short there in the negative, but that’s for the upcoming, for this fiscal year. Their projection shows that it’s going to be short. Hopefully, there’s still money from last year. So, I want to thank my colleagues for joining me this morning, my co-sponsor, Dr. Underwood, and my co-chair, and my other committee, Senator Tina Munier-Bines.
Good morning.
And we only have one person here to testify. I was hoping the administration was going to be here to tell us whether or not there is some cash still. Ms. Tali Titanow.
Good morning and Merry Christmas. My name is Tali Titanow. I’m the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Administrative Support from the Guam Department of Administration, and I’m here to testify in favor of Bill 19933. You have written testimony from the superintendent. Unfortunately, he wasn’t able to make it today. We’ve been here previously requesting, making you aware of our situation, and certainly this infusion of cash would be welcome. And I’m happy to answer any questions that you might have. I would like to take this opportunity, if I could, to appeal to you to take a look at the early learning appropriation. That appropriation, although was released by BBMR, did not, we did not, the TEF wasn’t sufficient to fund it. And so, because BBMR has determined that that’s an annual appropriation, we don’t have access to it this year. We have committed to contracts and hired staff, and so we would hope that you would consider amending the legislation so that that becomes a continuing appropriation.
I believe our Office of Finance and Budget has been made aware of that. They’re on that FSC committee, and so we’ll try to address that as early as possible today. Dr. Underwood?
Yes. So, Tali, regarding what you just shared with us, so how does this then affect the delivery of services for those preschool students? Because I understand you already have students in the classroom, and so to the extent that the funds were not released to you because it’s a, one, they interpreted that as an annual appropriation, so can...
So, at this point, we’re covering the expenditures through our operating budget. And so, funding that will take away funding from other programs.
Yes. Okay.
Just, we have something on the record. I’ll read the, would you read the testimony, Senator?
Hafaday, Vice Speaker Cruz, Bill Number 19933, an Act to Appropriate the Sum of $2,500,000 from the Unappropriated Healthy Future Fund revenues in FY 2015 to the Guam Department of Education Operations Fund for the operations of the Guam Department of Education, has been introduced to provide additional funding for GDOE. As explained in Guam Education Board Resolution 2015-09, Relative to Adopting the Spending Priorities for the Guam Department of Education for Fiscal Year 2016, GDOE is projecting a $12.9 million shortfall based on projected personnel utilities and contractual requirements. The appropriation in Bill 19933 will help to close the gap between the forecasted needs and the FY 16 appropriation level. Please also note that the Bureau of Budget and Management Research has determined that the early learning funding authorized in FY 15 is an annual appropriation and has since been de-appropriated. Although we have hired teachers and aides for the four pre-kinders classes, as well as contracted for the renovation of the classrooms, no cash has been provided against this appropriation. Additionally, the carryforward of cash shortages totaling nearly $17 million in GDOE’s TEF appropriations over the last three fiscal years has also hampered GDOE operations and consequently impacted its ability to keep up with vendor payables. We had hoped provisions in the FY 16 Budget Act would help to alleviate this gap. We thank Senator Underwood and you for introducing this legislation, which we hope will quickly become law. We also look forward to working with you and members of the Legislature on any additional remedies to more fully address GDOE’s funding issues. Sincerely, John Fernandez.
Thank you very much. And I note the presence of Senator Tony Adah. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
Tali, last Friday, when we were discussing the safety issues regarding forest students, one of the comments that had been made was that there was a shortage of school aides, right? And I’m not quite clear as to whether the requests that had been made by the schools had been affected by your budget. You have a lump-sum budget, but would this then help in meeting those needs in the critical areas that had been requested by the schools?
In our adopted budget, we had projected to hire between one and two school aides for each school.
Addition.
In addition to their current staffing level. And so, certainly, this funds would go toward helping us to achieve that goal.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Good morning, Tali, Mrs. Titanow. Is any of these funds that’s going to be used for operations, or like you said, to hire the school aides, is any of this going to be, is, are you guys earmarking any of these funds for vendor payments or any prior obligations? Or is this going to be strictly used for the hiring of personnel?
We’d like to use the 2.5 to shore up FY 16 operations.
Okay. So, none of it will be used for vendor payments or prior?
As cash becomes available, we try to address any outstanding vendor payments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
As long as the vendor payments issue has been approached, I’m afraid to ask, but how are we doing with our vendor payments and what’s the aging on them?
I actually ran a payables listing this morning. We’re at $6 million. That doesn’t include our recent payroll run, so we anticipate another $4 million in payroll vendor payables that we’ll need to be paying this week. Of the $6.4 million in vendor payments, about 43%, 44% or 2.8% is 90 days and over. And then another $3 million is between 60 and 90 days.
And the ones that are 90 days and over, what kind of vendors are those?
Our biggest outstanding payables is to our food service vendor, and then we have payments due to our air conditioning maintenance vendor. We also need to make a payment to Waterworks.
Okay. And how much of your 2015 allotment remains outstanding and not received?
So, we had an EFC meeting just last week, and based on documents provided from BBMR, they released all but about $500,000 of the 2015 appropriations. According to the AS 400, DOA has either paid or JVed $215 million. That leaves a balance of about 3.7, mainly the TEF. So, one of the things that we are and have been working with DOA is the non-cash charges against our appropriations. We’re trying to work through that to make sure that we understand what they are and that we believe they’re appropriate.
That’s 3.?
And that includes the $982,000 for early childhood.
Okay. Great. We’ll have to address that. Thank you very much, and we’ll recess until 10:00, where the committee will have a roundtable with, on the hybrid plan. And I thank you very much, Ms. Titanow, for coming this morning and explaining the financial condition of the department. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Superintendent, first message. Thank you. Merry Christmas. This roundtable, conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication, will come to order. Notice of this roundtable was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on November 30th with a second notice provided on December 5th. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature’s website. This morning at 10:00, we were scheduled to have a roundtable discussion on the hybrid retirement system, Bill 2-33. And first, let me apologize to the retirement fund for the late transmittal of the letter, but we thought we would try to distill all the testimony that we received that night of the public hearing and also what we received through Senator, at SenatorBJCruz.com. I don’t imagine that you were able to address all of them, but we would appreciate any kind of update on that, because I know everybody testified that day, and issues were raised, and whatever you can answer today would be appreciated. And why don’t I, then, first, let me thank my colleagues for joining me. Senator Nerissa Underwood, Senator Nicholas, Senator Torres, Senator Tony Adah, Senator Tom Adah, and the retirement board. This has been a long week, and it’s only started. And Senator James Espaldón. I want to thank the retirement board for being here. You guys did a phenomenal job at the hearing. I almost wonder why I waited until the financial advisors were here, when you did such a great job by yourself. Thank you, Mr. Ngero and Mr. Cruz for being here, and our public auditor. Why don’t, Paula, who’s going to speak for the board on some of the things that you want to present this morning? Go ahead.
Senator, I’m not sure what the format is for the roundtable. Okay. So, what we did was we asked, based on the questions that we received from both your office, as well as Senator Nicholas’s conversations with our actuary, we pulled together some information, but we’re all reading it at the same time, right? So, we all just got it this morning. So, I’m going to do my best to go through it with you. Again, just trying to address some of the, we’ll start with some of the concerns that were raised. Is that, Eric, or what? We want to do that, and as well as, just to, again, begin by stating that the retirement board presented a plan to the Legislature for consideration. And we understand that there are other things that have come up since we initially presented our plan. But our objectives, again, just so we all are on the same page, really were to provide a floor of benefits for our D.C. members, and secondly, to look at a plan that was cost-neutral. So, we believe that the plan that is in Bill 3233, or 332, sorry, meet those objectives. But starting with that and recognizing that there are other objectives that were raised, not just by the Legislature, but really by the employees who came and testified, other stakeholders who have appeared before you, these are some of the questions that we’ve asked our actuary to help us come up with and some answers to, just to give you, again, a framework from which you all can make an informed decision, which is what you asked us to do. Cost-neutral? Oh, I’m sorry. Dave asked me, just to clarify what cost-neutral meant. In terms of what our current contribution rate is, the plan that’s presented is cost-neutral in that it’s not going to cost any more to the government of Guam. It is going to cost more to employees. It’s calling for a higher contribution from the employees for their benefit, but it is cost-neutral to the government. And one of the things that we’ve looked at in terms of, from the board’s perspective, is while it is up to the policymakers to decide what the government of Guam can afford, again, just as fiduciaries and members of the community, we try to keep things cost-neutral as a place to start, primarily because we know it’s tough for the government to make these contributions as they are. So, anytime there’s an increase in the contribution rate, as fiduciaries, it’s going to be a concern for us, because we don’t want to put those contributions at risk. So, again, those are just things that we considered when we presented the plan. We recognize that there’s been a lot of discussion since then, and we’re certainly open to whatever the policymakers decide. Our job is to execute whatever is approved. So, that said, the first question that we asked Rich to look at was buyback into the old defined benefit plan. I can tell you that that, again, we recognize that there’s a question, and if we could turn back the hands of time, who wouldn’t want to go back into the defined benefit plan? But I can see from your reaction that you have the same concerns that we have. It’s not an affordable plan. It’s not sustainable. I think Rich does a good job in showing us what those costs would be. So, that would be Exhibit 1. He looks at two options. One is, it is, sir, on the, it’s the thicker of the, it’s the longer of the two handouts? It’s dated December 4?
No.
We’re looking at the letter, and the subject is cost estimates requested, amendments to Okay? So, Exhibit 1 is the old DB plan buyback options, and Rich pulled together some numbers related to active employees who switched from the old plan to the D.C. plan, giving them an opportunity. That’s Option 1A. And 1B is active employees who switched from the old plan to the D.C. and have at least 10 years of service. So, it wouldn’t be everybody. So, and you can see as we go along through the table, under D.C. participants, assume to transfer into the old DB. These would be old DB members who transferred under Option 1A. Everybody who transferred, he’s looking at 400, he estimates, right, 470 employees. Under Option B, we’re talking about 450 employees. The D.C. assets that would transfer, the reason we see an increase in Options 1A and 1B, obviously, more people are transferring over, so the assets are going to go up. In terms of the hybrid plan and the unfunded liability, you can see the actuarial accrued liability goes up from 450 in the current hybrid plan under Bill 02-33. It goes up from 308 to 325, the, I’m sorry, from 450 to $486 million for both modifications. So, again, the cost of the accrued liability is going to go up. If you go to the next set of numbers, the total unfunded liability, under line 2, the hybrid plan, the unfunded liability for those who transferred would be $142 million. If we allowed for the buyback of old DB members, that liability would go up to $161, and similarly in Option B, up to $161 million. Terms of the hybrid cost, which is the next section, if you look at the total cost for the plans, the respective plans, the hybrid bill is 4.99. Allowing for the buyback increased that cost to 5.6. If you go down one line further, it takes the contribution rate from 28.15 up to 28.57 percent of total payroll. I’m just going to leave it at that.
From the legal perspective, there’s so many issues that this would bring up. I mean, we just clocked this literally at 9:30 this morning, and we’re already looking at disparate impact issues. We’re looking at inequity issues when you start doing this, because a lot of people are not going to be able to afford the buyback, and then those are the people who are in the lower income brackets. It’s generally the people in the higher income brackets that can afford the ability to buy back, whether it’s through taking out loans, or it’s, you know, through refinancing their house to take the equity out. But when you look at the disparate impact of the potential for this, it’s going to, the people you’re trying to help, it may not help, because they’re just unable to pay back. That’s just one issue. The other issue is the tax issue. Under the D.C. plan, they were contributing at a pre-tax rate. The DB is a post-tax rate. So, the inequity is, you’re not going to get the same value for the dollar that you would in the D.C. once you convert that to DB because of the tax implications. So, that’s just another set of issues that we would need to address to even begin considering. So, what I want to ask the Legislature to do is, it’s not just the numbers that’s listed on this paper that tell the story. It’s the other side of it, it’s the practical and the reality and legal side with reopening the DB plan.
The second exhibit is the buy-in option for recent D.C. retirees. So, the question that was raised was, what if we allowed D.C. members who retired within the last year to buy into the hybrid plan? And that was the question we put forward to Rich. So, again, just going through the numbers, in terms of how many retirees we’re looking at, it looks like 95, is that what I’m reading correctly? Okay. So, in the first set of numbers, D.C. participants, line 3, we assumed retired D.C. transfer into the hybrid. We’re talking about 95 employees. Under the hybrid plan, the second set of numbers, we’re looking at the impact to what the assets are and the accrued liability. It would go from 450 million to 460 million. In terms of the unfunded liability, in the third section, it would go from 142 million to 147 million. In terms of hybrid costs, the total cost would go from 4.99, including the unfunded liabilities for both options, from 4.99 to 5.25. The contribution rate would go up from 28.15 to 28.33. So, we’re talking about, again, just answering this question. I’m sure legal counsel would say that there are some issues. For example, what about the employees that retired 15 months ago, or 18 months ago? I’ll let legal counsel speak to that.
Longer considered members of the plan, and therefore, how would you allow them to fund this issue? I mean, number one, it could be a plan qualification issue, which can disqualify the plan from its pre-tax status and its ability to roll over contributions from one employer to another if the individual decides to leave the government of Guam. So, there are a lot of tax complication, I mean, qualification issues when you start to bring people who are no longer employed, no longer have an employment contract with the government of Guam. If you’re considering this, then the government of Guam may want to do a separate plan just for those 95 people and address that issue, rather than incorporating it into a plan where there’s fiduciary requirements for the board in itself.
Okay. I think I probably should make very clear. My letter really just took all the testimony, all the emails, of individuals that don’t have an opportunity to be able to speak to you. I know that a number of us on this side have had opportunities to sit down one-on-one with a couple of board members. These employees have never had the opportunity. They presented these issues in emails to my office or in testimony, and the committee’s not taking a position on it. We just, this is what was said. This is the question, and we appreciate the response. I just wanted to make sure that they understood that when they email us about their concerns, that they’re not ignored. I did pose it, and we’ll make the decision on whether or not it is fiscally responsible to be able to do these things. But we at least asked the question and appreciate the answer, and struck short notice that he’s able to get this number together. So, thank you.
You’re welcome. And I think it’s a good approach. I mean, I think allowing employees to submit their questions and get some answers, whether they can be here or not, I think that that’s perfect, because we were very happy to see the number of employees that came out at the last hearing, and to know that others have submitted questions since then. I mean, that’s just a good thing, this conversation that we’re having. It’s all good, because it’s really taking a look at this issue that needs to be addressed. The third set of questions under Exhibit 3 that we’re going to look at had to do with law enforcement enhancements, and considering the adjustment of the proposed 1.75% benefit for each credited year of service to 2.125%. So, again, just increasing the benefit rate whereby, at 40 years, somebody could achieve 85% of their annuity. The second issue was whether, keeping the 1.75% rate the same, but allowing for early retirement at any age after 25 years of service. So, as with the other exhibits, if we look at the numbers before us, it’s not going to affect, I don’t see a change here in the, I’m sorry. affect, I don't see a change here in the, I'm sorry. Like you, I'm just reading this. So, okay, so the number of law enforcement personnel in the DC participants, distinguishing under sections 3A and 3B, we're looking at 418 individuals, employees that would be eligible. The impact to the transfer of assets remains the same, but again, we're just talking about trying to identify how many law enforcement personnel we would be considering. If you look under the second section of numbers, set of numbers, under the hybrid plan, the accrued liability would go from 450 under Bill 2 up to 455 million under option A, where we increase the benefit rate, and it would go up to 486 million if we kept the benefit rate the same, but allowed for early retirement with no penalty after 25 years of service. How does that affect the liability? If you go to the third section, the hybrid plan unfunded liability, again, that goes from 142 million up to 147 million and then 155 million. In terms of costs, the total cost for the bill, our current bill is 4.99. Under modification 3A, it's 5.18. It would go up to 5.45% under the 3B option. The contribution rates similarly would be increased from 28.15 to 28.28% to 28.47% if we allowed for early retirement after 25 years of service.
With regard to this, I think our, my discussion with the board is that they are willing to look at an option that will be equitable to these individuals. And more than likely, I think the discussion we had was make it similar to the FBI retirement as law enforcement and limit that to actual law enforcement, such as GPD, GFD. But that's a discussion that could still be had. But I believe the board was okay with looking at some kind of LEO provision, right?
And what's the current age?
The FBI current age is 60.
Is 60.
Yeah, so it's not based on service, it's based on age.
And our hybrid is, Bill 2 is 65, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And the DB plan, the old DB plan is 60, 65 also? Is that?
Anybody who came in after 1984 is age 60.
For law enforcement? Okay. Anything else? Okay, exhibit four. These are amendments to the hybrid plan contributions. All three scenarios here that were presented by employees looked at increasing the employee contribution. So 4A is increasing the employee contribution from 9.5% to 10%. Second one is similar to that, is that right? 4B, yeah, it didn't give a specific amount. And the third option is actually increasing their contributions from 1% to 2% in the 457 plan. So in this case, there's no additional, there's no difference in terms of DC participants nor in the accrued liability. It's really going to be in the employee contribution. So if you go through all these numbers, they, if I'm not mistaken, they all look the same, except for when we get down to the hybrid costs, right? Since the employee would be taking on more costs. So if you look under the fourth set of numbers, hybrid costs, the total cost under Bill 2 is 4.99. If the employee increased their contribution to 10%, the cost would drop to 4.49%. Similarly, down to 3.99. And it would go, it would stay the same for option C because that's with the 457 plan. It has no impact on the DC plan, I'm sorry, on the hybrid plan. In terms of costs for contribution rate for the, as a total percent of payroll, that gets adjusted. Under modification A, if the employee's contribution goes up, then the contribution rate drops to 27.28. Similarly, down to 26.38. There must be a number that Rich used for this, for 4B, because he got a number 26.38.
Yeah, I'm just hoping 478. This is members' money.
Right, right. So anything that we do to increase the members' contribution reduces the government's contribution rate. Okay? Question? All right, exhibit five. This is a lot of numbers, but they're all related, right? So we're talking about, in this particular set of scenarios, we are looking at not only the annuity rate of 1.75, we're looking at retirement age as well. So the first two options, 5A and 5B, consider increasing the annuity rate from 1.75 to 2% and 1.85% respectively. Looking at options 5C, we're considering reducing the retirement age from 65 to 60 and 65 to 62 years. The last two set of options is increasing the annuity rate from 1.75 to 2.25 and increasing the minimum number of years for reduced retirement from 25 to 28 years. Dave is just pointing out that by increasing the annuity rate to 2.25, it allows an employee to retire with 35?
35 or 36.
Which is item 5D, sorry.
30.
Oh, okay. So it's 38 years of service, as opposed to the plan, which is currently 49 years of service. Okay. So let me look here.
What's the achievement of an annuity?
And one of the things that the board's Members and Benefits Committee had considered when we looked at this option was, again, just sort of remembering what our objective was, right? Which was to, was to find a floor benefit and to keep things cost neutral. We didn't look at a plan that was trying to achieve maximum 85%. We, that wasn't one of our objectives. And again, those are objectives that can be identified. Certainly, we can work on different things that get presented, but that was not one of the objectives. Was it to create a plan that allowed people to max out at 85%? That wasn't a consideration of ours when we put it together.
Just for the benefit, the reason why we don't create retirement plans based on a max is because you just don't make retirement plans based on maxing out. I mean, social security doesn't max out, no one maxes out. It's up to the individual if they want it to max out. So, and that's why it wasn't one of the considerations when we were designing the plan, is most people do not. I mean, if you look at the actuarial studies for the last few years, the average percentage was 70% for all the retirees that are retired now, so not 85. So then to ask the board to create a plan around the 85% number is sort of just an anomaly. But that's where we're coming from on that side.
And for the listening audience, this will be posted, all of these documents will be posted on my website, senadubjcruise.com by the end of the day, probably after lunch, but for, to look at. And again, because I just sent the list to the retirement fund on the 30th, and though they worked seemingly day and night over the last several, last week, and many people on this side have just seen it for the first time, as you have just seen it since 9:30 this morning, we just saw it at 10:00. I'm hoping that the retirement fund will receive questions from the, from the members of the legislature on any of these points, and we'll discuss it further in the January roundtable. But this is a good start. I think all these numbers really help everybody understand how much all of these things are going to cost and how some of them may not be as bad as we thought it was going to be and are, might be something that we can work in. So I'm hoping that all of you will be amenable to receiving or ask, either meeting one-on-one with any of the senators or just responding to some of their written queries that some of their staff and themselves may put together over the next month. And then we'll make it very clear in the January roundtable how these numbers, with the other questions, because I know I have no questions right now. I'm just trying to, trying to, just trying to absorb it, and some of the monies. And so I just wanted to make that clear to the public, that we appreciate all this information, and we will be going through it and posting some questions later. If, and some may actually have some questions after you finish your presentation. Please continue.
And actually, if you have questions as we go along exhibit by exhibit, if we don't have the answer, we'll get it, we'll get the answer, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask Attorney Camacho, based on his presentation that he gave a couple of minutes ago, in as far as the averaging out of the 85% versus the average of the 70% and how that, if you can just repeat that again, because you said you took the numbers based on the average of 70% of those who retire.
No, what we did with Senator was, we just took a look at the historical, of all those who have retired and are receiving a service annuity right now, what is the average years of length of service that they retired at? And a majority of them is at 70%. So it's not at 85%. So as we keep, like, trying to strive for this 85% number, it's sort of an anomaly to, when even the 7, 8,000 retirees right now have not achieved that over the, over the last 50 years. So it's not a goal that, in designing a retirement plan, that every single employee reach that max capacity. It's, you know, it's a, it's a factor of cost, right?
Okay.
So that's, that's what I meant. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. Thank you.
So in continuing with exhibit five, just in terms of looking at the second set of numbers, the hybrid plan and what the accrued liability is, you can see the changes depending on the options range anywhere from 450 million, which is the current bill, as high as 513 million, for item 5C1, which would reduce the retirement age from 65 to 60. And again, that's just, we're paying benefits sooner, so naturally the cost goes up, right? In the third set of numbers, what does it do to the overall unfunded liability? Again, it goes from 1.5 million with the current bill to as high as, in section, item 5D, that option, it could go as high as 1.594 million, billion, sorry, I'm sorry, billion, So all these things, it's like the vice speaker said, I mean, everything has a cost. And I had asked Paula just to give me a feel for what kind of impact different decisions are going to have. And if we assume that payroll is 500 million a year, then every percent of increase in cost for the government is equivalent to $5 million. Every basis point, if my math is correct, is 500,000. And I think that's pretty good for an English major. I don't even work for a bank. I just want to say that. I am a fuzzy study student, so.
Could you repeat that again for every?
So if payroll is 500 million?
My auditor. She's been checking yours.
No, no, no.
Oh, you're checking my math? Okay. No, no, no. It's just, so it's an easier way of remembering.
Believe me, that's why I asked Paula. So assuming 500 million dollars for payroll, one, every 1% of cost is 5 million? And every basis point, then? That's a new term I learned on the retirement board. Is 500, right? Is it 500? Oh, oh, it's 100. Or is it 50? No, it is 500, right? This point?
I see.
All right. St. Anthony and Academy Math, there we go. We didn't even need to be called Cougars then. Academy was, sorry, I don't know what's going on. See, we're surrounded.
I noticed in the various scenarios, sometimes we come up with maybe six different possible scenarios. And I'm just wondering if, you know, for the numbers that we're talking about, you know, is the difference between 447 million dollars and 430 million, that significant? Or can you just collapse that and say, it really doesn't make a difference whether you, whether you average out the salaries from the highest 3 to the highest 5, or from the highest 3 to the, such that then, at least for us looking at this, you know, we can say, Bill 2 versus, you know, these other options here, but, but, you know, it's kind of like a difference between, it goes from 98 cents to a dollar, it's like, difference is insignificant, I guess. You know, you could probably recoup that and, you know. And I say that because I remember one of the retirement board chairmen, many years ago, when the stock market, you know, took a nosedive and the retirement fund lost like 20 million dollars, right? And I go, 20 million dollars? And he goes, it's nothing in a billion-dollar fund. You know, so I'm wondering, is that the same thing here so that then, you know, really the difference between modification 6A and B1 and B2, you really could collapse that down into one possible option because the difference of whether you go up to seven years or five years is really insignificant? And it just makes it easier for somebody like myself to get my arms around it.
You know, I think you're, I think you're right in that. Again, since we all just had a chance to look at it, I think what would be helpful for everybody that's listening, as well as the legislature, is for us to take a look at it and sort of come up with some thoughts that, like, legal counsel has, so that you can take these all into consideration when you're looking at the options. I mean, I think that that's going to be helpful for everybody.
I look at maybe if two options, I mean, you collapse it.
And as opposed to looking at, you know, six different options.
Right, right. And I think what the vice speaker has asked us really to do is just to, again, be able to speak to everybody's comments that were raised, and I think that it's good for us to go back and take a look and see what we're going to recommend again with regards to the hybrid and some of the things that we've been thinking that we could look at, just, again, to build consensus and to come to consensus on what we can do with this plan before March.
To your point, Senator, I think that every.
You know, that there are going to be trade-offs with every iteration that we make. And then ultimately, I think for us, from where we sit, we're trying to just agree on a scheme. So if you take a look at, as you mentioned, anywhere, 5A to 5B, the difference in the marginal cost is going to seem really low, and chances are it is. And we can scrub those numbers however, however the committee wants. But I think from where we sit, from where the board sits, our main objective is to come up with a plan design. And then if that design works, to come up then with the cost to see from a legislative perspective if it's, and then ultimately the administrative perspective if it's going to be affordable, and then peel back from there.
The same, Senator, pertinent to your point. I think it's important to understand what the dollars are affecting. So for example, on a 1.5 billion-dollar liability, 20 million dollars is large, but it's not as important, say perhaps, as 15 or 20 million dollars to next year's budget. So if you're dealing with 1.5 billion in a liability versus 500 million in a budget, the numbers are going to be the same. And then you add in the question of how important are each of the dollars to the employee contributions and things like that. So I think it depends upon your reference point when you want to understand how much, you know, each dollar matters, so to speak.
We did, last year, around 10% is our return. And that is 150 million.
Is what we made last year. So at the time that, that, the point was made that 20 million is a lot of money, but relative to the size of the fund, it's not much. The same goes with, with our returns last year when we did 10% and made 150. So if, you know, in absolute terms, if you look at the cost, and everybody's talking about the unfunded liability going up 150 million, relative to the amount that we made, that's what we made last year in term, in the way of a return. So absolute dollars, it's large, but relatively speaking, it's, you know, it's about what we do.
I had a quick question about the assumption of the number of active retired, people who would, active DC participants who would transfer into the hybrid. How do, how do you arrive at those assumptions?
You know, Senator, they looked at. You know, Senator, they looked at, they, Milliman looked at multiple transfer scenarios. I believe the one they're using here is where 100% of the members transfer over. So we have scenarios, for example, where people over the age of 40, for example, transfer over, or where you have a sliding scale, where more younger people would stay with the current plan, and more of the older people closer to retirement would go into the hybrid. So there's multiple scenarios. I think Rich, so is, or Milliman, so as not to confuse everything, just said, okay, let's just take 100% coming over to the hybrid under Bill 2.
Just looking at it, I was a little surprised that it was so high. Just...
You're exactly right, you know, because those numbers, I think, raise, range from about 90 million, 85, 90 million at the low end of the scenarios, to about, I don't know what it is, at the high end. This would be close at the high end, yeah. Yeah, it's quite a range. And I think it's an old Milliman report, something that we did before in the initial oversight hearing, that shows you what those scenarios are and what the estimated unfunded liability under each of those scenarios would be. So if you'd like, we can obviously get you that information pretty quickly.
It's actually in her packet.
It's in the second.
It's the June 16 Milliman report in your packet. They gave you. So this scenario is really the greater of the needles, right? This is the...
Well, this is 100% of everybody coming over, if that's correct.
Okay. No, I mean, it's a good point of view to consider when we're looking at the numbers.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
We just jumped to Exhibit 6, and that speaks to the vesting and salary averaging, increasing vesting from five years to seven years, increasing the salary averaging from three to five, three to seven, three to 10 years. It doesn't change anything in terms of the number of DC participants, but you can see that it does have an impact on reducing the accrued liability as well as the total unfunded So in the second set of numbers, you'll see that the accrued liability actually goes down from 450 to 447, all the way down to 384, if we increase the salary averaging period from the highest 3 to the highest 10 years.
Why didn't you explain that, that part? Because I know that was one of the questions that was being posed, of what would be the best way of doing it, where the highest 3, highest 5, highest 7, how it would...
You know, it's an important, it's an important factor, Senator, because obviously, you know, as you pick the highest 3 versus your highest 10, your annuity really changes. I think the, if you look across the plans, having the highest 3 is pretty common in terms of how they do this. And the reason it's very common is it allows you to pick up the impacts of inflation. So at the higher end of the salary, where now, obviously, the cost of living has increased over the same time, being able to pick up that standard of living at a similar standard of living, I think, drives that top three years. As you drop down, you obviously haven't kept pace, drop down to seven, five, seven, 10 years, you haven't kept pace with inflation. I think that approach to determining the highest three years for the annuity is also important, depending on how large the COLA is each year. Our COLAs are not that large. They don't keep pace with inflation. So therefore, to drop down to 10 years, where you haven't kept pace, and then you don't get a COLA, what it means is as each year you spend in retirement means your ability to keep up with your costs is more challenged.
Are we still on Exhibit 5? Oh, Exhibit 6. I'm sorry.
But you can ask him.
Yeah, no. Five or six, really, I mean, because this kind of speaks to what I'm talking about, about the political risk of reopening this entire plan altogether. Because while we may not implement these suggested changes in Bill 2, the legislature next year could implement them, or the legislature after that could implement them. I mean, we opened the door for that risk to always be there, for someone to come in and say, hey, you know what? We need to lower the retirement age from 65 down to 60, so we're going to go with 5C1, and we're going to bring up the contribution rates to 29.82 and so forth. So I just kind of wanted to make that point, because it kind of underscores a lot of the conversations we've been having about how, when we talk about contribution rates and the cost to taxpayers, so long as we have these kind of DB plans or this hybrid plan and the ability for politicians to constantly come in and at any given time, you know, change the benefit structure, that's, that can jack up the cost of these things indefinitely for the unforeseeable future, so long as it's the primary plan of the government of Guam.
Senator, the board also addressed those issues and understands the objective that you're trying to achieve with your statement. From the board's fiduciary perspective, you know, what matters to us is the policy that you guys implement and the changes to the policy over time, particularly as you fund them when you change them. So if you fund them when you change them, our fiduciary responsibility is met. If you leave them unfunded, which is what has happened so far, so the real problem hasn't been the changes to the policy. Yes, I mean, some of them aren't necessarily, you know, ideal, but it's not the changes to the policy that mattered to the unfunded liability. What mattered to the unfunded liability is that you didn't fund, not you, but the policymakers did not fund those changes. And that's what drove us to $1.5 billion today. So many, many, many plans change over time. I mean, it's just healthy to keep pace with the environment that we're in and the society that we're in. But you have to, just as we do, have to be fiduciarily responsible in terms of making those changes. So just, that's the board's perspective on how we implement the policy and what our duty is when we see those changes coming into the plans.
And speaking of that liability, and with the implementation of GASB 67 and 68 this year, fiscal year 2015 will be the first year when this unfunded liability now will be on the books of all the different component units, as well as the government of Guam. For example, right now, the airport will be the first government of Guam entity to issue its financial statements, probably by the end of January. And already, and I just forgot now, it's around $30 million that's going to be added to its financial statement. They took, you know, it was done at the beginning of the fiscal year as a prior period adjustment and the differential. It will run through the financial statements, and then that liability will be recorded. And so what will happen, for example, the larger, in my own look, most of the quote autonomous agencies will not go into a negative position. But this is going to happen nationwide. All governments, state, local, will be showing their unfunded liabilities. The bond market has been anticipating this number, but until it's actually right on the face is when we'll have it. And so it will be a constant reminder now what we will owe for all of these plans that governments, state and local governments, give to their employees.
Okay, so that covers the six exhibits in this letter of December 4. I'd like to call your attention to the letter of December 6, where we asked Rich to put numbers to the conversation that he had had with Senator Sinicolas after our last public hearing, and really considering the option of, Senator, please correct me if I'm wrong, looking at changing the employee's contribution to make it similar to Social Security, which would reduce it to 6.2%. Again, I think the Senator supports the idea of the hybrid, but reallocating the expenses from the employee to the government of Guam. So Exhibits 1 and Exhibits 2 are, Exhibit 1 is the current bill, and Exhibit 2 is the alternative design, which is really looking at the impact of some of the changes that we could make under the suggestions of Senator Sinicolas. It's difficult that they're not side by side. Trying to think myself how to do this best for you all. Well, you already know what the hybrid plan is, so why don't we look at Exhibit 2, which is the alternative design? I'm sorry? It's the... No, I mean, I did it for me, and I didn't do it for my best. Senator Torres, this is where, what Dave was speaking about, that Rich actually looked at sort of these different scenarios, 100% transfer, 100% over age 40. So he does have the numbers for those different scenarios. And again, we're going to, we've been using the 100% transfer because it's the most expensive and it just gets worst-case scenarios. Okay, but if we look at Exhibit 2, which is the alternative design... Paula, just, excuse me. The current plan is the current DC plan? It's not the bill?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. So if we're looking at the alternative, the alternative design, for simplicity's sake, may I suggest that we just look at the 100% transfer and go all the way down the line? Right? So the same number of individuals with transfer, the accrued liability stays the same, under the unfunded liability, all of that stays the same. It's really under the cost that changed, that we see a change, right? So the hybrid normal cost then goes up to 9.29, and that includes the unfunded liability for the hybrid. And the employer's contribution rate goes up to 31.13%. The current rate, for the record, for everybody's memory, is this 28.16.
This chart actually shows the best and the worst case. Because if you look at the last column, it's nobody transfers. Versus the first column, it's 100%. So as you can see, the reason why the 9.3 goes up even if no one transfers is because you have future employees going into this hybrid paying a lower rate.
And one of the things that the board and the Members and Benefits Committee had talked about was, again, it's, we appreciate certainly Senator Sinicolas's efforts to consider the impact that a change of the hybrid would have on an employee who's used to contributing 5%. For certain, there's no way around it that the hybrid is doubling that contribution. And we appreciate that. But a couple of things that we've talked about is, one is the question of whether or not 10% is too much to ask an employee to set aside and save for retirement. Is that an unreasonable expectation? Yes, it is twice as much as 5%, but is it unreasonable to ask an employee or that an employee sets aside that kind of savings for the benefit that they could yield in retirement for a lifetime? That's one thing. The second thing is in terms of how that impact, how it affects the government of Guam and the community and taxpayers as a whole, right? So again, we're not the policymakers. We don't dictate what can be afforded by the government. But as fiduciaries, we're concerned about the cost getting out of hand. We know GMH has a difficult time. We know the DOE's had a tough time with the high contribution rate. So again, when the contribution rate goes up, we get a little nervous because it affects the likelihood of seeing missed contributions, and that's going to affect the integrity of the trust fund that we have to, that we're entrusted to manage, right? So those are things that we consider, and for sure, if the government was in a better financial situation, I could certainly understand that. I mean, I certainly appreciate it, and I know the employees appreciate it as well. We're just explaining to you some of the concerns that we have when we look at shifting some of that cost.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. My big concern is when we look at this little line item here called the Hybrid UAAL, that's what really just gets me all in a knot. Because the hybrid unfunded actuarial accrued liability, and what gets me there is that this amount is going to be paid basically by every single employee, because what the original proposal is proposing is to reduce the government contribution rate to every employee and instead rolling that 3.36% over on the bottom side to pay for the UAAL. And what bothers me about that is that not every single employee is equally contributing to that unfunded liability, they're not all equally benefiting from the unfunded liability. You have some employees who are creating a greater unfunded liability than others. But what's happening is you're reducing the government contribution rate for all employees, having some subsidize others who are creating a greater liability than they are. So that's kind of where I'm at with all of this, because I really think that if you're creating, or if you are a party to this accrued liability, then your employee contribution rate should go up. And if I want to retire in five years and it's going to create a 4% unfunded liability burden on the government, then I should be putting in 4% more of my own pay. But I don't think that somebody who is not contributing to that unfunded liability should be burdened with having to have their government contribution reduced on the front end to pay for an unfunded liability on the back end, that is really to bail out the guy that wants to retire in the next three years. So that's where I kind of wanted the conversation to go with respect to the numbers, because if we keep the contribution rates more or less equal, but we increase the employee contribution rates for those who want to retire sooner, or who, those who want to retire in the next five years, then that's a calculation that I'd be willing to engage in. But right now, the way the numbers are looking at, to me, is it looks like we're going to be having all the government of Guam employees have their government contribution rates reduced to subsidize an unfunded liability that's going to disproportionately benefit some employees versus others.
Senator, you can actually quantify that. If you go to the Milliman Letter of June 16, 2015, second page. Under number 7.
There's two, June 16. Which one?
Good question. It's the one that's titled Updated Cost Estimates for Proposed Hybrid Plan as of September 30, 2014 is the subject line. Second page, Senator. Under number 7, you'll see, in the upper half of the, you'll see a table there with words in it. It looks like...
It looks like every other Milliman paper.
Yes. But if you follow that, you can see, go to the very bottom, there's four rows in the table there. DC members whose 401A employee account balance is less than 50% of actuarial cost of past service, that's 3,468 participants, versus your number, which is those with excess, is 4,817, as of this point in time. You know, it obviously changes as markets change and contributions change.
So for me, what I'm looking at is having the contribution rates from the government and the employees remain the same. For those who opt in of these 3,468 participants, have their employee contributions go up at an amount necessary for them to fund the hybrid plan that they want to participate in.
Whereas having... They would vary by employee as well.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, I can't give an equation right here and now, but what I am saying is that we have 8,000 employees under the new plan. But if 50% of them are going to be having their government contribution rates reduced to subsidize these 3,468 who are short, that's where we have inequity for me. So if we can come up somehow with...
The balance here is, you're only going to get credit for what, the value that you have in your account. So the balance here is the creditable service. That's, your annuity is tied to the creditable service. It's not necessarily the cost per individual. Because if you don't have, let's say you're short, right? If you're short $50,000, you're not going to get credit for that $50,000 that your account is missing. So the equilibrium or the break even is at that point, and you only get credit. So it's... So, it's very, you don't plan around individual participants in terms of contribution rates because you just don't do it. You, you're just not gonna have a plan that says, for employee A, because your unfunded liability is X, your contribution rate is Y, right? It's just administratively impossible to administer, because that can change. If someone's salary, let's say this year's 25,000, and they get picked up by the executive or legislative branch and their salary goes to 80,000, now, what, you know, it just, it's just not a workable situation.
But then, I understand that. Oh, I'm sorry. I understand that. So, but, but what I'm proposing is that we keep the contribution rates relatively the same. I'm actually hoping we can bump it up about 20% to make it on par with Social Security, but that's a separate conversation. But keep the, the current contribution rates the same, and have those who opt into the hybrid understand that their employee contributions are going to go up by X amount necessary for, for whatever the offset is to this, to these 3,468. So, for example, right, right now, the proposed contribution rates are 9.51 and 1.6, right? But what I'm saying is keep it at 5.5, and then if you go into the hybrid, you dump in the other 3.36 on top of your own, because that's the unfunded portion. So as an employee, if you're gonna participate in the hybrid, then, then you pay the unfunded. If you're not gonna participate in the hybrid, then you still get your government contribution rate on the front end.
Senator, that, that certainly takes the UAAL down to zero. But it's also an individual calculation, because I believe each of these employees is short by a different amount or percentage, because much of this depends upon how you allocated your 401A assets. So, for example, if you put your money into a certificate of deposit or a money market type of account, you're gonna be very short. If you had your money, particularly in the last few years, in equities, you probably don't have a, you know, a deficit in your account. So each individual, I think, is going to be, their share, if you will, of that unfunded liability is going to be pretty different.
From, from what I understand, the conversations we've had over the months is that we've kind of thresholded it, where if it goes, if you have balances in your 401A and 457 above X amount, it gets dumped into your 457.
Correct.
So we're kind of, we're kind of already shooting low to try and pull everybody into the plan as much as possible, right? So what I'm saying is, is keep that, you know? I mean, anything in excess, if you can, if you convert over to the, to the hybrid or whatever, you're still gonna get that dumped back in. But, I just have, make sure that the formulas are such where everybody's gonna contribute the 2.33s, that you're not, or I'm sorry, the 3.36s. So instead of lessening it out from the government contribution rate, everyone who goes in the hybrid pays that extra 3.36 as their, as their employee contribution. And then, I don't know, formulaically, on the back end, change the, the, how much is taken out of the 401A or 457 proportionally, you know? Because we, we already have existing balances in there anyway. And so, you know, you can, you can do, you can do the calculations on an individual basis, because I can understand how the challenge would be paying forward with contribution rates. But if we're also offsetting some of this unfunded liability with the existing balances, then that's where the variance can come in on the individual participant and what they owe. Where everybody is going, if you go into the hybrid, just hypothetically, right? If you go into the hybrid and we keep the contribution rates the same, you're going to have to put in 5%, which is your current, plus an additional 3.36, which is the UAAL. And then, depending on what your balances are in your 401A or 457, we'll have to take out more or less, depending on whether or not you meet the minimum threshold or if you're way over on that.
We're getting lost in the math, so, if you pay the 5%, well, let me just back up and talk more scheme rather than numbers. When we were calculating what the contribution rate was gonna be, it was anybody, it was actuarially based. So, if you had enough money, using the number that Dave gave you, anything beyond that would go into your 457. If you didn't have enough money, then that was the unfunded liability.
Right.
So if you continue at 5%, that 3.3 is gonna change. So, that 3.3 doesn't become the unfunded liability anymore. So we'd need to figure that out. What Dave was saying is that, if you go in that direction, what's gonna happen is that we're gonna have to calculate an unfund, or we're gonna have to calculate a contribution rate for the employee, for every single employee, because their balance is different. For those who have enough, they're gonna be actuarially sound, so they're not gonna have an unfunded individual liability. The unfunded liability are for those who are short. So, that's gonna need to be calculated on a person-by-person basis. And that's gonna depend on when they want to retire. So we're kind of making what is a trust fund look like an individual plan. So it gets a little more complicated than just moving the numbers. I mean, it can be done, I'm sure, but it just becomes a little more onerous for us to have to, to figure that number out. And so, what I was, what I was mentioning in the beginning is, we can, we can come up with the numbers and, and the calculation to get us where we want to go. I think, from where we sit, it's just more important that we agree on the scheme, you know, how we want to move forward, and then come up with that cost. And then, from your perspective amongst your colleagues, you determine whether it's affordable or not. Because we're just the implementers of, of the policy, and so we're just trying to agree to a policy. I think, and before I get off too far, where we've gotten lost is right in the weeds, and I, and I'm fearful that's where we're going right now. So, and I, and I'm not saying it's not important, because those are important discussions that need to be had. But we're not a funding source necessarily, and we'll answer the questions, and you know, we'll come up with the numbers and the analytics. And I think it's a good discussion to be had, but that's beat, I mean, other than saying this is what it's gonna cost, I don't know what, I mean, it's difficult for us to, to, we can give an opinion, but we have no, we have no, you know, we don't have a reach in that lever. That's, that's a policy decision that ultimately this body's gonna make.
I think the other thing to consider is, you have to go back, and this 5% number in the DC plan was pulled out of the air. It wasn't any, there was no rhyme or reason as to why it was 5%. At the time, it was just thought 5% from the DC side, once they implement the 457, then they can increase their contribution to meet the 9.5%. Although the 457 was never implemented until several years later. So, that scenario didn't happen. But, the 5%, again, if we just start from there, it, it was not a number that was rhyme or reasoned in any way. So, it was just a number the legislature at the time thought would be appropriate. So, to use the 5% number, knowing that if you take a look at just national statistics and national standards, all financial planners are saying someone needs to put in at least 10 to 15% of their pay. So, if that's the starting point, then the hybrid's there in regards to the employee costs. The employer cost, again, like the Board has said, is really your call, and how you want to translate that. If the, if the total cost for the hybrids, 12.1%, that's your responsibility to divvy it up, right, however you want to. We're just saying, this is the cost for the scheme that we have presented to you, based on making sure that it is cost neutral, so that you have a starting point. But, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that the 5% really didn't come from, so it's not something that rhymes or matches with what financial planners are advising all the other individuals in the nation today.
Initial 5% came from the legislature, that was the proposal, came from, from you?
I, I don't dispute that. I, as, with 5%, that's, that's a typical match in a 401K that an employer would provide. A 401A that we have, and the government is really the government's version of a 401K, so it, it all fits in terms of what's typically offered in the private sector. My concern is that the proposal that we're entertaining drops that from 5% down to 1.6, and instead adds it to the back end and puts that 3.4 into the unfunded liability portion, but not all of the employees are equally benefiting or equally needing that unfunded liability subsidy, you know? And so, what we're, what we're doing is, we're taking from the existing 5% of all employees that they are, all are supposed to be getting, and we're, we're making some, some employees benefit to a greater extent from that 3.4 than others. And that's, I mean, that's all part of the parity, the equity conversation that, you know, I've been having for a while. And I, I understand the, the idea of the numbers needing to get vetted, and I, and I wanted to be clear that this is not in any way an attempt to stick anything into the weeds. But for me, if we're going to roll this out, I don't want us to, to have to come back, you know, and, and fix it, you know? So, the contribution rates on, on our side, because I understand the retirement fund has its fiduciary duty to, to the members, absolutely. And for me, on the legislature's side, I just have a very strong fiduciary duty to the taxpayers and also to the employees, and, and what's fair for everybody who's, who's going to be affected. So, that's, that's really where I'm at in terms of the conversation, and I'm hoping that we can come up with different financing solutions to, to pay for a contribution rate that I think fairly reflects what the government should be putting in, which is, I think, 5% at the minimum, you know? And, and what the employee should actually toss in on top of that to pay for the security of the hybrid and its added costs versus having the, the taxpayer necessarily subsidize all of that. So, and there's different, and, and this was brought up in the hearing also, there's just different ways for us to be able to identify the funding we need to pay for this. But, but before we can identify the different ways to pay for it, we need to understand how much we're going to pay. You know, and that's kind of why I keep coming back to the conversation. Are we going to have the employee pay for all of it or most of it, or are we going to stick with the original contribution rates? Or, as I, as I mentioned over the last year, are we going to mirror the contribution rates of Social Security so that when that system finally turns on, it's completely seamless for the government disfarvers handling the expense side of the equation?
I could just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, please.
I was just gonna add, and, and those are good questions, but just two points. First, I think we need to define what it is, and, and then we can determine how the employee or employer pays for it. And then, secondly, I don't know that there is necessarily anything wrong with revisiting this thing, again, at some point in the future. I mean, at this point, we can make the decision based on all the information that we know as of today. Social Security's been around since the 30s, and they, they scrub that thing off and, you know, and, and they make changes to it, as we know, on rates, on benefits, and so on. And in all likelihood, they're gonna make more changes in Social Security and all welfare packages in general. So, I think that coming back to it, if we know more and, and making some tweaks here and there, isn't necessarily a bad thing, provided that it's done within parameters. And I appreciate what you're saying about enhancing benefits without paying for it. No one at this table, I think, is necessarily, wants that, so, so, you know, that's a good concern to have. But diligence needs to begin with respect to that at the board level. And I think this board has been good about, in general, has been good about holding the government, the employer responsible for payments. I mean, there were times when we didn't make, allow active-duty employees to retire. So I think that this board has a pretty good track record of that. Not flawless, but I think we have a pretty good track record of that. So, if it needs to be passed with all the information that we have today, we would, you know, suggest that maybe we do that, and then if we need to address it, if Social Security becomes available, when Social Security becomes available, we address, we're gonna need to come back to the table and address that, too. But I think that, you know, there isn't a wrong answer, except for not doing anything, because every day that goes by, and I don't think anybody will disagree, that not doing anything is probably the only thing that we can do that's wrong. And we've, I know all of us have, perhaps, I take a little more, a personal approach to this, because I've been at this for a long time. And Lena and Dave have done a really good job, but, but I'm trying to get something passed, and every, every year, there's a new set of retirees who go by. And this year, we're talking about the 12, those who retired in the last 12 months. But there are people waiting to retire now, and something I think we all agree needs to be done, we just can't just keep moving this thing further into the future.
Thank you. I wanted to echo the same sentiments as Jerry. This is, it's now been 20 years since the DC plan was open, and it is a complicated situation. I don't envy any of you there, because at the, at the end of the day, what is this going to cost our government? But to re-echo what Jerry said, doing nothing is the worst alternative. And I would urge that the legislature pass something by the conclusion of the 33rd Guam Legislature, so that, let's say, effective October 1, employees can look forward to having some kind of plan. It's not gonna be perfect, there's gonna, there's a lot of areas, just, I was, I was not present for the, the hearing, a lot of good areas and questions that could be tweaked. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna, you know, the unfunded li, should be a concern, and the government increasing its costs further should also be a concern. And that, that's why I do like the Board's position to make this cost neutral. Where you can begin to enhance benefits for future is when we bring the rate of 28% right now to a more reasonable rate, because GovGuam is among the highest. It's not the highest, okay, but it is among the highest in the country already. And to consider raising that more is, you know, when people like, when agencies like GMH, although they've paid their retirement contribution, they haven't paid their income tax withholding at all. That's to the tune of over $6 million. Department of Education struggles each time, each pay period. So, we have a duty to our taxpayers to ensure that, you know, over time, we are amortizing such that in 17 years, the unfunded liability will disappear. So, I would like to urge, you know, this is not a perfect plan, but it's a plan that is better than no plan at all, and that's how we've been operating. And I would urge the legislature to pass, at least as a minimum, this plan. And then, as we begin to pay down the unfunded liability for the DB, that's the time to look at these other scenarios as to what could then we afford to more reasonably pay. Thank you.
And I want to thank the, as the appropriations chair, thank the retirement board for presenting something that was cost neutral.
Yes.
Because I think the taxpayers would be shocked if they realized how much that 28% means.
Yes.
And, I don't even repeat it publicly for fear, but, and I appreciate the fact that you and Paula have now come out with that short little, for every percentage point, it's 5 million, for every basis point, it's 500,000. And so, so that, I'm just hoping that all of us on this side understand that, where you think that it might be just a small amount, that, that, for every 5 million, I mean, for a percentage of it's 5 million, that's 5 million from someplace else. And maybe for, you know, now I can't even say that, you know, the, the cost to G, to GMH and to GDOE for as large as theirs is, their, their payroll is, I mean, it really is very cost prohibitive. And I, I really appreciate the fact that, within that very short period of seven days, that you've gotten this much information back. And we will be reading it, and I'm not going to ask to have all the senators funnel their questions through me. I want them to, to, to speak to you directly, and I'm hoping that you leave yourselves open to receiving individual emails or letters detailing questions. I think what I would like to ask is that when we come back in January, that you say, "Over the last month, I've received all of these correspondence from the various senators, we've addressed this issue, we've addressed that issue, we've addressed this issue." So the public knows that we are trying our best to, with due diligence, take into account what the costs are going to be for, for these, and trying to address it at the earliest possible date. And so, I'm hoping that all of my colleagues will take this opportunity to engage some of you, even English majors that know more than... Wow. And it's just to answer some of these questions, because these numbers are, they're, they're various different scenarios, it's not just a, a variation of another, it's actually a whole different, whole different issue. And I'm hoping that they'll be able to, to discuss it with all of you, and you'll be able to report back to us that these are the, these are the responses that you've given them, and hopefully, January, they'll... there'll be fewer questions. In February, there'll be fewer and everything answered by that point, okay? And just so everybody doesn't get freaked out about the Gatsby 67, with or without the hybrid, that's going to be reported in January.
Right. No. With the FY 2015 audits, financial audits, the pro-rata share is, will be reported. And of course, GOV-Guam, the General Fund, and Department of Education are going to be the ones who will be most negatively impacted because that's going to bring, you know, they're going to be shouldering about $800 million of that $1.3 billion. Yeah. Yeah. So that will very negatively impact. And DOE is half of that, you know, because DOE is the largest. So those two are going to be the most negatively impacted. And that will have an effect also on the bond market because when that number is finally, you know, the ability of GOV-Guam to be able to go out, you know, because the good news is we have a plan. And the plan is we are amortizing it down. And we have shown through our action that we are doing that. And so as long as we keep on that track, we are not necessarily negatively impacted. But it could have on GO bonds going forward. It could.
Thank you. Anybody? Again, I invite all of my colleagues to please, I don't mean to burden the retirement fund, but trustees, but please, if there's any questions being raised by my colleagues, just accept them and try to respond to them in the hopes that we will be able to answer some of their questions and be able to work through this. As you put it, doing nothing is the worst thing for us to do.
Yes.
And I can't go anywhere without being, I mean, I was at the gym and ran into someone who started government service same time I did 40 years ago. And he's still working and he's like, I thought, oh my God, okay.
With all due respect to your schedules, can we get a deadline where you guys can send your stuff to retirement funds so that we, before the January roundtable, we're not at 9:30 in the morning reading our responses?
Okay.
So it's up to you to set the date. We just want--
Okay. Now, why don't we do this? Within the next two weeks, any questions that you're going to pose to the board, let's get it. I mean, that'd be before our Christmas and they'll be the one that's working over the Christmas holiday.
When is the January meeting?
We haven't set it yet. Well, depending. But if we need to, we'll make it late if it's not ready. Okay. Thank you. So in the next two weeks, if everybody just sends their questions in and if Rich needs to do any more, or if you just need somebody to walk you through, please, because I'm going to have a hard time trying to explain this. And I'm hoping that our young friend here, who has no vested interest in this, the two people who aren't even in government are the ones that have been at this the longest. And so I want to thank both of them for their, they're really, I mean, over and above the call of duty for community service to the two of you for--
Good luck.
And so thank you very much for all that you do for the retirees. And thank you very much. And we stand adjourned for the day. Thank you.
What time is it?